We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Lowe, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
As we bow our heads, dear Lord, we thank you again, once more, for a day of being able to wake up, to worship you. Dear Lord, we ask that you come into the midst of this meeting and work wisdom through us that we can do the best business for the citizens of this city. We ask that you continue to wrap your arms around our mayor, the administration, and those who work hard every day to make sure this city runs in the best manner. In your son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call a roll?
Mr. Nieper, Mr. McLean, Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. There are no scheduled public hearings nor privilege of the floor. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. I move to amend tonight's agenda by adding ordinance 12113 and moving resolution 713 to the beginning of tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda by adding ordinance 12113 and moving resolution 713 to the beginning of the meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Resolution 713.
A resolution expressing the appreciation of Lima City Council to Dr. John Robert Snyder for his commitment to education and service to the Lima community.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that resolution 713 be passed on its first reading after having been read.
Second. The motion in the second is to adopt resolution 713 on its first reading after having been read. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Why don't we have her read it first?
Yeah.
Whereas, Dr. John Snyder has been the dean and director of the Ohio State University at Lima from 2003 to the present. And whereas, during his time at the Lima campus, Dr. Snyder has been and continues to be involved in many community service organizations and clubs such as Lima Allen County Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club of Lima, St. Rita's Health Partners, and Allen County Board of Developmental Disabilities. And whereas, Dr. Snyder has authored and contributed to numerous published journal articles, books, and manuscript proceedings. And whereas, in 2010, Dr. Snyder was given the Lifetime Achievement Award by the American Society for Clinical Pathology. And whereas, Dr. Snyder has served internationally as a consultant to Zambia, Ethiopia, and South Africa to improve clinical laboratory services as part of the President's Emergency Plan for AIDS Relief under the auspices of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and American Society for Clinical Pathology. And whereas, Dr. Snyder is transitioning from the position as dean and director to a teaching position at the Ohio State Lima Campus, and it is the opinion of this council that his commitment to education and the Lima community should not go unrecognized. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Lima, Ohio, Allen County, Ohio, a majority of the members elected there too, concurring that the Lima City Council extends its sincere appreciation to Dr. John Robert Snyder for his commitment to education and his dedication to the Lima community for the past 10 years.
Houses, are any discussions?
Yes. Mr. President, thank you. Doc, thank you so much for being a part of our city, being a pioneer in our city. I was involved with some of the organizations that you gave us opportunities to use things at the school, but thank you so much. And I just asked you if you're sticking around. You said yes. So it's great that we still have you here in our city. And I know you'll be around, support things that are going on in our city, and be a part of it, too. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? Just like to offer my thanks and gratitude for all you've done for our community over the past several years, and I'm also glad to see that you're going to be still around and hopefully participating and contributing to our community. But it's a pleasure to hopefully pass this, I'm pretty sure it will. Okay? We'll have the clerk call a roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper. Mr. McLean.
Resolution 713 has been adopted on its first reading by a six to zero vote. We'll make sure that the minutes indicate that's six to zero because two are absent. Okay? So if you want to come forward, Al.
Thank you so much for this honor. Actually, the honor is being as part of this community and working with this community. Ohio State Lima is your state university, and you've supported it, and I greatly appreciate that. I count it a privilege to have been able to serve in that capacity and to continue to serve in this community. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that item A on the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is that item A on the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments, additional appropriations.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments, transfers.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Mayor regarding legislation for the 2014 tax budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin. I move that communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Mayor regarding legislation for donation of bicycles.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I'm going to communication number four, receive and file legislation on the night agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? I would just like to say, I think that this is an excellent program. I'm glad that, I mean, I've seen the number of bikes that accumulate in the fenced-in area on this side of the police department, and I think that this is, has the promise of being a very fruitful program and puts those bikes that are unclaimed to a very, very good use. So I'm glad to see this coming to us this evening. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit for Ibachi at 59 Town Square.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number five be received and filed, and the clerk authorize to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a transfer to Lima Foods at 1590 Northwest Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number six be received and filed. The clerk authorize to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit for Dollar General Store at 1330 Belfountain Avenue.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed, and that the clerk be authorized to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objections. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with the FOP Gold Unit.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed. That legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation for an allocation for security upgrades.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation for the All 75 0.21 project.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Human Supply Inc.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 11. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I just wanted to point out that this communication is covering demolition of a former business at 1048 East Elm Street, and the structure will be coming down. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to dispose of city surplus.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number 12 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 12. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with LJB Inc.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 13 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 13. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I just wanted to make note that this is phase three of five of the all-traffic signal improvements based on a study that was completed in 2010. So we're moving forward, and again, this is phase three of five. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 14.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to apply for a JAG Local Solicitation Program Grant.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number four, receive and file legislation on the night agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 14. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 15.
From the Director of Public Works regarding a memorandum of understanding with the Rotary Club.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 15 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 15. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 16.
From the Director of Utilities requesting legislation for the McDonald Street Combined Sewer Repair.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number 16 be received and filed.
Second.
For the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 16 and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Reports of officials. Mr. Sheeley.
Council President, members of council, my topic tonight is the sewer segments, what's called a segmented sewer. It is the sewer that is on McDonald. The sewer that basically broke is up in this area. This is the same sewer that basically, excuse me, it's up in this area. This is the same sewer that broke on Collet. It's all linked to it, and the large lines, the dark shaded lines, are what's called segmented sewer systems. And these are basic pictures, and what you have is you have a concrete structure that basically forms the structural support for the sewer, and then there's a vitrified tile or a terracotta tile like you see in a lot of the old subways and so forth like that that lines the sewer system. This is what is failing. It's a complex sewer system that we see out in the system, which then requires a complex repair. It's not going out, and some of the sewers we have where you just go out and put a band on it and it's fixed. This thing here takes a total rebuild. The estimated, as I pointed out in the letter, the estimated repairs to the sewer up in this area is probably around $100,000, between $100,000 and $200,000. The initial one on Collet when it failed, we had just under $200,000 repairing that. This is a 77-inch sewer. This is a 55-inch sewer up in here. We have sewers down in the Kitty Street area, Albert Central, so there are 18 miles of this type of segmented block sewer system that is out in our system, and we believe, I believe, that this sewer system is reaching its useful life. What I'll be proposing to council will, through a request for an ordinance, would be to undertake a significant study of these 18 miles of sewer systems. They are all very critical. They are the collectors, the interceptors for all of the other flow that basically comes down to these to be transported out to the wastewater treatment plant from all different sectors of the community. And if one of these has a catastrophic failure at the wrong time, like during a heavy rainfall, and we cannot relieve the sewer system, it will then, in fact, flood major parts of the community because of it. This location up here, there was a collapse. We did have a vehicle that got into the excavation. Fortunately, it was a larger, heavier vehicle, and it got hung up on the frame to keep it from having close to a 10-foot drop into the sewer system, which could have really hurt somebody. So these are the high-risk type of sewer systems that we need to be looking at addressing. It is part of our asset management program, but we do feel that we'll need to basically use some very sophisticated technology to go in into these sewer system and videotape them, as well as, you recall, on the Collet Street, we looked at a system that would use a radar-type process to tell us if this sphere is getting out, is being compressed, which is the start of the failure process for this type of sewer systems. Any questions?
When you're going to make that assessment, do you anticipate any consideration of, you know, are those large enough capacity at this time? I guess what I'm saying, in terms of the overall war that we have going on with combined sewer overflows and such, you know, are we going to try to approach it in a way that we're going to fix it, I hope, and satisfy that mandate, too, rather than fix it once and have to go back in and told it doesn't meet the EPA's glorious standards?
I think we would have an opportunity as we look at rebuilding these sewer systems to potentially increase some capacities, which then would release some of the size of the Simmons Field Basin. But on the other hand, these are in core parts of the community that if we go to a box culvert, as example, type of construction, it would take the street out for extending periods of time to basically do that type of rebuild. So while the rebuild of these systems, if we catch them before they fail, basically we can do it without digging. We can literally either do a slip line like we did, or we can put the sock and the cured sock through, which we'd have to weigh all that as part of that question.
John? All right. Other questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
When you say that if we catch them before they get to that point, do we still got to go back? If we catch, like say for instance, Dan, this one right here is in really bad shape the way it look.
Right.
Over in the right-hand side.
Yeah, it's a total, you can see here it's a total collapsing sewer system.
And also the one over here in the middle there, too.
Right. That's actually another picture of this one.
They're all the same? Okay, this is in real bad shape. Now, do you catch before, like you say, the street be cut off for so long? We get, we catch them, Dan, would you think we got to go back in there again, or just go on and do what we got to do and get it done, or?
Well, what we have now, we have a catastrophic failure at a point area that we need to get the sewer back up and functioning. So that is a, we dig here and we repair it. But the assessment of the systems in that area would tell us whether we can do a slip line, whether we could put a cured-in-place type of liner in there to keep other parts of the sewer system from collapsing. So it's, when you have an actual collapse of sewer system, you got to get back open, otherwise you put the community at jeopardy in that area.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Sheeley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sheeley. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee has two reports. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the first one was a combination committee and public hearing meeting held on June 3rd at 5:00 PM in these chambers. The subject matter was the CDBG Home Public Hearing and Review of Applications. In the discussion, Ms. Odom went through the chart and informed the public and the committee that there were 19 applications and 18 were funded at a reduced allocation to each. The one that was not funded, Counselor McLean expressed a desire to move funds to this application, as he feels it would be a great value to area nonprofit agencies to obtain grant funding from other sources other than the CDBG, and with United Way matching funds, we would have doubled the use of those dollars. That was to be discussed at future public hearings. Also, Ms. Odom went on to indicate that the Choto Operating Fund of $11,820 cannot be reallocated within the home, can be reallocated within the home projects due to New Lima Home withdrawing their application, but the Choto Set Aside Fund of $55,678 cannot be reallocated and would be put on hold due to HUD regulations since New Lima is not doing a project with And the reason some of this allocation was funded, these applications, was, Ms. Odom went on to explain that the projects, one big difference in the activities and why there was some funding was that from the Law Department, some activities from the Law Department was moved to general fund so that more can be used to the remaining projects. I move that this committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the committee report of the June 3rd Community and Economic Development Committee as submitted by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
The second committee of Economic Development Committee report, the meeting was held on June 10th at 5:30 in the council conference room. The subject matter was junk abandoned autos. The committee chair opened the meeting and did a quick review of the previous meetings held on this subject. The committee had requested a flow chart of the proposed junk auto enforcement procedure, cost estimate for an additional inspector, which has been submitted to the committee tonight on the June 10th meeting with a breakdown of the fines that exist now from the May 13th meeting. There was discussion about costs of the towing, and then Counselor McLean had a question on property owners, and that was going to be discussed at a further meeting. The chair wanted to express that under the fees that the city charges are not covering the costs and would like to see that changed, that changed to at least cover the costs for the junk autos. A discussion followed on that, and no action taken. The chair said that approximately July 22nd would be the next meeting on this subject of junk autos, where the landowners would be invited for input, as this is a code issue involving them as the owner of the property. The chair has the list, and will get with the council clerk to draft a letter and send out. With nothing else to address, the chair entertained a motion to adjourn. A motion was made and seconded and adjourned at 6:28. Mr. President, I move that committee report of June 10th be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the committee report from June 10th. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 12113.
An ordinance provided to the issuance and sale of $46,775 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the property owner's portion in anticipation of the levy and collection of special assessments of the cost of constructing sidewalks at various locations in the city, together with all necessary occurrences thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance 12113 be amended by removing the last four words in the caption.
Second.
The motion in the second is to amend ordinance 12113 by striking the first last four words in the caption. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Mr. President, I also was supposed to include that a, in that motion, that a clean copy of the ordinance be submitted. So I move that a clean copy of the ordinance, after being amended, is submitted.
Second.
The motion in the second is to authorize the submission of a clean copy of ordinance 12113 upon passage. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that the fiscal officer's certificate for this ordinance be received by council.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the fiscal officer's certificate regarding ordinance 12113. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that ordinance 12113 be passed on its first reading as amended.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12113 on its first reading as amended. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 12113 has been passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote. Ordinance 12213.
Amending the 2013 annual budget.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 12213 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 12213 has been passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote. Ordinance 12313.
Adopting the tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year for the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 12313 be placed on second reading and that a public hearing be scheduled for July the 1st at 7:00 PM at council chambers.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12313 on its first reading, no, on its second, placed on second.
Placed on second reading.
Placed on second reading and to schedule a public hearing for July 1st at 7:00 PM. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 12413.
Amending ordinance 24612.
Mr. President?
Ms. Townsend?
I move that ordinance 12413 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12413 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 12413 has passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote. Ordinance 12513.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the FOP Ohio Labor Council Gold Unit.
Mr. President?
Ms. Townsend?
I move that ordinance 12513 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 12513 has been passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote. Ordinance 12613.
Authorizing the mayor to make a donation to the Lima Family YMCA Iron Riders Program.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that ordinance 126-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
This is great. I'm glad the director came in from the Y and talked about this, Mr. Iron Rider Program. And a lot of folks know, some of the folks probably know that Iron Riders came from the Buffalo Soldiers. This came back from the Underground Railroad. It's very, very, very good for the kids to learn about what it heritage, what Underground Railroad came from. Also, in Ohio, there's a lot of places there that we bring a lot of history out. So I'm glad the mayor and the director and his staff, and also the Children's Center and all of them came together, and we will be donating the bikes that have been sent back to the police department for the kids to use and learn about this kind of history. There are a lot of kids that never know about it. A lot of folks did not grow up to hear this. I had opportunity to learn about a lot of this, and I'm glad we'd be able to give this to our kids in our community and learn about this by riding their bikes and going to the different bike rides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Was there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 12613 has been passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote. Ordinance 12713.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Lima Rotary Club and Johnny Appleseed Metropolitan Park District.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 12713 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 12713 has been passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote.
Mr. President, excuse me. I should have said something. And I don't think it makes any difference, but there is a typo in that memorandum of understanding under section three where it says, said funds provided by the Lima Rotary Club will be used by the City of Lima and Park District only for resealing, and it says here, or repaying.
And I think it's supposed to be repaving.
I don't know if that needs to be corrected.
No, it's not for the ordinance.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good eye. Ordinance 12813.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Hume Supply Inc. to the demolition of 1048 East Down Street.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 12813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 12813 has been passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote. Ordinance 12913.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to auction B boxes for snow flowers.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that ordinance 12913 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 12913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 12913 has been passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote. Ordinance 13013.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with LJV Inc. for engineering services for the all traffic signal improvements phase three Wayne and High Street projects.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 130-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 13013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 13013 has been passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote. Ordinance 13113.
Authorizing the mayor to consent to the Ohio Departments of Transportation for improvements to I-75 between the Oglesnes County Line and just south of Fourth Street interchange.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 131-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 13113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 13113 has been passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote. Ordinance 13313. I'm sorry, 13213.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for accept minister funds from the U.S. Department of Justice for the JAG Local Solicitation Program Grant.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that ordinance 13313, 32, I'm sorry. Or is 13213 be passed as be been written? Cut off guard.
Is there a second? Motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 13213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer and Mr. McLean.
Ordinance 13213 was passed on its first reading by a six to zero vote, and 13313 narrowly. Almost.
Wait, I was in there looking at my papers?
Miscellaneous business. Mr. Lowe?
Two things. On July the 13th, A New Dimension Chapter 26 here in the Lima will host a decade dance. And that will be from 7:00 to 11:00 PM out at the Holiday Inn. This decade dance, we would like for you to come out dressed in your favorite era. They're gonna have music from every decade, and it's just gonna be a really, really fun night. A lot of individuals always say, what is there to do in Lima? We are doing our best to supply a night of fun, clean fun, adult fun. And again, that's July the 13th at 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. It is a $25 donation, and for tickets you can call 419-228-4838. And also, I would like to restate that East Side Neighborhood Association is still intact. Next meeting is July the 9th. It will be held at Black Lays Hair Salon, which is at 6 Town Square, until we are able to get another facility to let us in and hold our meetings there. So again, July the 9th, Black Lays Hair Salon, 6 Town Square. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin?
Mr. President, I move that the absence and pay of counselors Nefer and McLean be approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to approve the absence and salary of counselors Nefer and McLean. Is there any discussion? Mr. Law Director, we can do those both in one motion.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
And last evening, my wife and I went down to the park. There was a wonderful event put on by the Tomo family of dealerships and Happy Days, concert in the park, several, several bands, they were all volunteer. And watching the little kids run through the park was really a lot of fun. They served free hamburgers, hot dogs, potato chips, pop, water, and had a very nice turnout. And with the weather, the way it was, they had one downpour, didn't last long, but it was a very enjoyable afternoon and evening. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things this evening. Midway East will be meeting this Thursday, June 20th at 7:00 PM at their location on Kibbie Street. Just a reminder, July 1st at 7:00 PM, there will be a public hearing, number three, and this will be where the final allocations can be discussed and changes made to the CDBG and home dollars. And, Mr. President, Mr. Shealy, I'd like to see you afterwards. I want to take a look at your poster there of the map, seeing those locations, especially for the 5th Ward. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yeah. A couple of things here. First of all, we're gonna be kicking off our Person of the Month, June the 29th, at the Civic Center here, at 5:00 PM. And we want to thank all the folks that are doing a great job in the 6th Ward. I've seen a lot of changes been made, and we say, keep it up. And don't let no one tell you it's gonna stop, or that we're lazy, it gonna happen. We'll keep putting the pressure on it. Also, we've been dealing with some drug houses. I would not call the addresses out. And I got a call, I returned a call from Serity Call that I was out and about, and hoping to handle that quick and fast. And these are very interrupted drug houses. Interrupted me at night, had to get up out of my bed and take care of it. There's no way I can take care of it. Only thing I can do is talk to them. And they have been reported, and enough is enough. And I know the folks are tired. I'm tired, and everyone around there is tired. This continue going on, but it's got to stop. And it gonna stop. We're moving that. Also, Hoover Park will be working on their Make a Difference Day. They did one last year, they will continue making, putting that project together and getting ready for the book bags and the food and stuff they give away to kids and stuff. I know some folks that said something about them doing that, but they want to make sure that people in their neighborhood in that area will come out and support them as a part of their recruitment, trying to get more members, new members involved in our neighborhood association. A lot of numbers are going down, and we're trying to entice on the younger people, get them involved, the neighborhood association, and allow them, give them a product to show that we can do something, we can make a difference in our area. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of time presumed, but you can make a difference. We just can't continue with the same folks. So we're trying to switch it over, let them know. A lot of young folks are taking over this year, trying to work on different projects. So, you know, understand what neighborhood is all about. So we're working on that part. Also, we got grass on, I talked to Howard about the grass on there on the railroad tracks. They're getting very high, and I'm hoping that we can, we can change that real quick. I understand Railroad is controlling that, Destiny O in that area, but I know people's, we had a guest in town this past weekend, and folks were stopping me saying, if my grass was that high, you know, they're gonna charge me. Why they giving them a break? They're not giving them a break. Trust me, they're not giving them a break. But we will be taking action on that grass, especially the grass over on Central. It's very, very high in the railroad tracks, and the railroad tracks have been taken up. And it's very embarrassing when you got people from out of town, and some of the folks is working on some projects and want to see how we can do on the place. We hoping that we get that taken care of. Also, I appreciate all the ones that helped out this past weekend. They did a good deed by helping out the young folks this week in the Rent-A-Care program. We had a guy that, Mr. Davis, I'm gonna call his name out, he showed the kids how to cut grass the right proper way. He showed the kids how to be responsible and being on time. So, Mr. Davis, I appreciate you so much, and I know your time is very, very valued, but talking to the young youth, letting them know when they first time working, that they get opportunities to things they supposed to do. So, thank you for that, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to comment on how nice the flowers and the planters look in the square and the other landscaping out there on the way down here tonight. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. I just want to alert council members that in light of an unresolved concern tonight at the council of the whole meeting for the CDBG allocations, we're running into a bit of a deadline problem in the ability of, frankly, to establish a quorum, vacations, et cetera, that people have scheduled. So I just want to give you a heads up, there is a public hearing scheduled for July 1st. However, there may be either a Community and Economic Development Committee meeting or a council of the whole meeting in the interim between now and then to have some